Going to be called meeting to order at six thirty six P M. This is Monday, October twenty seven, two thousand and twenty five. We're here for a regular Killington Select Board meeting. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda as may be amended?
I'd like to approve the agenda with one amendment. I'd like to put the bus in at number six and then everything else down.
So after liquor control?
Yeah.
Sorry, Bus, he bumped you a few spots. Okay, Bus. Does anyone else, or can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, is there any other alterations that need to be made? Nope, all right, hearing none, all in favor of the agenda as amended with the bus coming in at number six and everything after that, van purchase down, being bumped one number, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Good job. Approval of the minutes.
So moved.
We have.
October fourteenth.
Fourteenth, October fourteenth, meeting draft minutes. So can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Does anyone have issue with the, or corrections that need to be made?
Yeah, my wife's name is spelled wrong. It's R E V E N K O, not R E D, I believe they put in there.
Yeah, so.
I don't have a form. R E V E N K O.
R E V N K O, E N?
We're spelling it wrong like that way.
Yeah, okay, so basically just the V instead of the D.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, if we see these things, we could just send that email and say, please correct it before, once you get it. I mean, something like that, someone's name.
Yeah, is there any other corrections or changes that need to be made to these minutes? Good?
Yeah.
Excellent. All right, so approval of October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five, meeting minutes as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. Consistence, comments, concerns? Going to go to the room first, going to come around this way. Any comments, concerns, issues? Hey, George, go ahead.
Yeah.
Remember to state your name for the.
George Brand.
Thank you.
You guys been dissecting the old budgets. What you should really be working on is the new budget. I mean, all the dissections you've done were up to like, maybe two percent was off, something when I was watching those meetings. But I'd like to see you guys try to concentrate on the budget that's coming up in January, which I haven't heard any discussions at all there. So, you know, that's my thing. My other question is, how many people do you have applying for the town manager?
I believe there's six applications.
Okay, is that short?
Never, never done this before for looking for a town manager.
Jim, what'd you have on the last set?
I think, at this point, I didn't know how many we had. We had around thirty that Tommy and Ellie then would cut down to and got us, I think, nine, that he thought was good. I've been away, I just.
Yeah, I have staff, right? Why are we so short on the applicants as well?
I don't see us on Indeed.
We've done a lot of advertising, I don't know.
Did you do it a different way the other time?
Are we on?
No, I don't know how it was done before.
Are we on Indeed? Because I just didn't see it on Indeed.
It, it was, yeah.
I did?
It was put on.
Okay, because I didn't.
Think we're a V L T C.
Yeah, yeah. Rutland Health.
Oh, place that we typically hit.
Our own website. I just, I just put in today while I was, or yesterday while I was on a plane, I just Googled town managers, Vermont or whatever. I didn't see, and I got into an Indeed, but I didn't see us in Indeed. And it just could be me going through and maybe I didn't get.
It's supposed to be on there.
So.
And my other question, Patrick, are you applying for the job?
Yes.
And what's your qualification for that?
I, I wouldn't get it.
No.
Not the town part.
But I would think if you're hiring a town manager, something that might be important is maybe they were a town manager. That's my opinion.
Cool. And I'm not going to be putting, I'm obviously not going to be part of the process. All right, any other questions coming around? Nope, anything online? All right, seeing none?
You on?
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Eli.
You're muted, Eli. You're muted, Eli.
Ah, yeah, is that better?
Yep.
Yes.
Well, I just wanted to say last week I, or last two weeks, I brought up a question about the audio. And I don't know if you made any change, but it does sound much better tonight at home, so thank you.
It's only people that talk louder right now.
That's okay, that'll work awesome.
Thank you for the, for the aye. All right, anyone else online? And do we need grab any names? We need Josh.
Josh is probably the same one as last time, but the J A H A.
Jahah. Is Jahah online? Is, can you just clarify, is that your full name, first and last? Or is that a nickname? I'm going to ask you to mute. We just have to record everyone's name.
Yeah, I'm unmuting Jackie Hamilton.
Jackie Hamilton, thank you, Jackie.
Yeah.
We got everyone else's?
Yeah.
You got Nori? Okay, cool. All right, so going to go on to liquor, Board of Liquor Control, Peggy?
Yes, so I gave everybody a list. So I'm going to start at the bottom because it's a renewal. It's the Roland Rooster at Skyship Base Lodge. It's a renewal for a first and a third.
I'll make a motion for the town clerk to move forward with the Roland Rooster for a first and a third.
These, can I get a second?
Second.
And then I have a question.
Go ahead, I made it second.
The Roland Rooster has been saying that they're moving up to Mountain Green.
Well, we're going to get to that.
Okay.
Okay.
So this is a separate one?
That's what I was going to ask, there's two separate licenses.
It's, it's two separate, they're going to have a second location in Killington.
Oh, okay, that's right, above in the green, okay.
The Cluckin Cafe, D B A Cluckin.
Okay, so I made a motion and asked a question.
Yeah.
So this is, this is for Mountain Green, this is for Skyship.
Skyship, the one at the bottom.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, any other questions? Can we make a, did I get a second to that motion?
You did.
Yes, you did.
All right, all in favor of approving or having the clerk move forward with this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, abstain. All right?
Okay, now we're at the Roland Rooster. They're having a second location at the Mountain Green, the Cluckin Cafe, D B A Cluckin on the mountain. She's looking for a first and a third class liquor license.
I'm making a motion for the town clerk to move forward, a first and a third for the Roland Rooster. D B A, I guess, is the Mount, uh, Cluckin Cafe, D B A Cluckin the mountain, Cluckin on the mountain.
Cluckin on the mountain. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, any questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, none?
All right, the next are all new, first, third, and then outside consumption. It's at the Gray Bonnet, Weekender Hospitality LLC. And I have Matt Dobbin Spent.
I'll make a motion for the town clerk to move forward with a first, a third, and an outside for the Gray Bonnet business entity named Weekender Hospitality LLC. Someone second?
Can I get a second?
I did see Matt on there.
And Matt, would you like to say anything since you're online?
All right, what was that?
I said, if you want to tell us anything since you're, you are here.
Oh, no, so, yeah, we just took over possession of the Gray Bonnet there on the sixteenth and looking to reopen the restaurant and bar and providing some of that traditional hospitality back to Killington.
Excellent, thank you. The outside permit, is that same as?
Outside consumption?
Yeah, sorry, outside consumption. Is it, is there anything special with that, or is it just the same area that is?
Same area, just really encompassing the pool so that we can make sure that we're, we're covered there.
Excellent. All right, any questions? All in favor of having clerk move forward on this, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstain? All right.
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Peggy. We'll be moving on to the bus. Floor is yours.
Sure. So we're, we're trying to gear up for the winter season for our RKC bus. And I know the town of Killington usually paid for that last service, the twelve to one o'clock in the morning service. And we met with some folks last week in the Killington area and between them and us, we really want to stop that, that last run. Because it's very few ridership, not a lot of stuff is open. And then the support for, you know, that, that late at night is just not the greatest. So we, we'd like to stop that run. And I think a lot of the folks in Killington agree about businesses and stuff wise. Then the next thing is to try to get some payment for the RKC, the late night shuttle. So from like the seven fifteen through the evening shuttle. So that's, that's kind of the next step that we're at, is trying to figure out how we can keep that bus running at night and have it funded.
I'm going to jump in. As the zoning administrator, I'm also on the bus that I meet up once a month on a, either the first or second Tuesday, depending on how the schedule goes. So this has been talked about for a while, a little history to go back, I think it was two years or three years prior to COVID, prior to COVID. There was no bus service up here in the summertime, they're talking about winter right now. After seven o'clock at night, there was none. So the town board and the chamber made a deal, we would get billed and we would split it. Then COVID came, businesses were not doing great, and the town decided to keep going as a whole. The, the board decided to keep it in the budget. And it was approved in, in the budgets. So there is this bus that leaves Rutland at eleven fifteen and it gets to K one at midnight. When we talk, we just say midnight from K one, they're in Rutland, they say eleven. So it leaves at midnight. And they're averaging four riders.
Eight riders.
Eight riders.
Oh, eight, eight riders.
A week.
A week, not a day, a week. And since COVID, restaurants now are closing down, most of them at nine o'clock at night. They're not staying open till eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night. And the only place that stays open, he has always provided transportation in the area on his own. So it's the car group. So that may be why the bus only has eight or whatever, a week. And it comes out to be, it was like fourteen grand for that bus. It's going to, if we, if we decided to keep it, it would go to.
For that run or?
Well, for just that run.
Uh, it was about twenty-three thousand.
So to keep that run going from Thanksgiving.
To midnight? Or, sorry, the midnight from K one.
The midnight from K one. That specific one would be like twenty-three thousand dollars.
It's twenty-seven, sorry.
Twenty-seven thousand dollars to run from Thanksgiving to Easter, which is a hundred and thirty-one days.
Yeah.
Which you divide that by a hundred and thirty-one, the twenty-seven thousand, and then divided by eight. I mean, it, it's expensive.
Is it the same rider eight times or?
Some, some nights it's nobody, so it's, you know, I mean, the, the cost is just.
Working late night shift?
Yeah, exactly.
Get that bus every day?
Yeah.
Well, it may, it may not be a, a worker, it could be someone that's staying in one of the employee housing along the Killington route.
Or it could be somebody just riding up and back to stay warm.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what people do nowadays. So I would suggest that we, the first step is, is that we cut that midnight bus. It doesn't make sense, eight people, if we do a quick calculation here, you're talking twenty-seven thousand divided by a hundred and thirty-one days, it's two hundred and six dollars a day. So times seven days is fourteen hundred and forty-two dollars. And that's what you're, divided by eight, gets you back down, a hundred and eighty dollars a rider. And it could be the same rider taking from Rutland, a long, a long, a long ride up to stay warm and then getting back down. So I would suggest that we, and, and we've had these conversations at the bus, and I tell the bus, I'm only one, I used to say one of three, I'm one of five.
What's the next latest route? If, if that midnight one goes away, what's the one before that?
Let's not get into the price, let's just.
Yeah, yeah, not the price, it's just the time. So it would leave, uh, it would leave Rutland at ten, be up here at eleven, so the last one down will be eleven.
So someone can, I mean, it's, the restaurants are not open.
You still have a.
The restaurants are not open.
Yeah, yeah.
One place that's, the two places that are open has their own shuttle.
Yeah, restaurants generally are seating people till nine-ish, maybe nine-thirty.
No, no, they're telling you if you're not, nowadays, some of the places I've gone into, they're not taking your order at night.
You need to go to other places.
Yeah, you do.
No, maybe not.
Kitchen's closed by ten.
Kitchen, yeah, kitchen is generally closed by ten.
Yeah.
And if, if someone's taking a bus, kitchen, no, but if someone's taking a bus and the kitchen closes at ten, the owner can get them out, usually.
Well, just remember, the bus is leaving at eleven from K one.
Right.
So by the time you start getting down, it's ten after, whatever. And we've had conversations that maybe they can stutter the bus, ten or fifth, maybe.
That was the stutter.
That, that's, that's.
That was, that was the stutter on the shuttle lap.
Okay.
But people who ride the bus generally, regularly, generally know the schedule.
So I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and cancel out the midnight bus. So if someone could second it.
I'll second that.
And then, and then have the conversation.
We have a motion, we have a second. Now we can have the.
I'm going to tell you that I went to a meeting Thursday morning with the chamber and, you know, they think that they can raise money or whatever, but I'm going to tell you the history of this bus here. Every business used to pay, and then it stopped, and there was just a few of us paying for it. And then it was completely stopped. And I'm not making anything bad about any of the businesses or whatever, because it's their money and they spend it the way they're supposed to. But the deal was on just this part here, it was supposed to be split fifty-fifty, and no one's stepping in. And this bus starts Thanksgiving. I don't think we have enough time. I think, I think we need to all vote yes to shut it down and then have the next big conversation of right now, after this vote, on the next step. You know, well, so, you know, but if anyone has any questions on the bus, they're, they're.
Was that a, was that the full bus too, or was that one of the smaller ones?
It's the big bus.
Big bus, yeah.
Doesn't make much difference for the little one.
For cost?
No.
It's just most of the cost.
Thirty dollars an hour, I think it's thirty dollars an hour.
I mean, the nuts, I mean, we'll get right into it, the nuts and bolts of this is that RKC cost is one point two and some change million dollars to run that bus for the year. Our twenty percent local match is two hundred and forty-five thousand for the year. We need to come up with some local match to pay for that af, that evening winter service that you guys would like to have. So that's where we're at, is to try to generate some funds to help us pay for the local match, so the bus doesn't have to keep eating it every year.
That's the next conversation.
Yeah, that's the next part.
Right, okay, so, so the first part that we have right now, we're just talking about that, we'll call it the midnight, midnight from K one route. Is there any specific questions or discussions we don't have about that route?
This is going to tell you, you're probably going to get a little from certain people that may push back, like, why? But we don't have the money to do the twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Is there any, because this is definitely something that affects the public, does the public have any question in, in the room? And then I'll go up line, yeah, wait.
I would just be somewhat concerned about DUI type stuff. I think it's, I mean, eight riders, I'm shocked that there's eight riders a week, but.
And that's eight through the winter? Like, that's last year's numbers?
And some of it is, you know, the employees shuttling back and forth, like, from the chalet to the hillside or something, so it's.
But the numbers you're saying of eight a week is from last winter?
Correct.
Okay. Any?
Be cheap, if you guys have given the Ubers.
I need to have the Ubers.
It's crazy.
So you, you had eight a week, did you, did you have any statistically different weeks, like holidays?
Yeah, so we looked at a regular December and then looked at President's Week and.
Can you just say your name, so?
Jade McQuellon. So the President's Week was the eight riders, and then it was also eight riders on an average week.
Okay.
We're basically running that bus for nothing. It's clearly, yeah, it's.
And do you have statistics on, does that like Friday, Saturday? Or is it?
Every day of the week, it's a week.
Yeah.
So like, um.
Sunday through Saturday?
Yeah, I mean, zero, one, three, zero, five, like that.
I mean, one of the other issues here is, is that at midnight with the roads, if you want to go into that.
That's, that's.
It's not just our roads, it's all the way coming up and.
Yeah, so, I mean, we do have some pretty crazy storms up here in the winter and, and nothing against anybody, but there's, there's just not a lot of support for the, for the driver and the bus and the passengers. I mean, we've had buses stuck up here. One pulled last winter was from Earl's, so it was fifteen hundred dollars to pull the bus back on the road. And that was just a pull on the road. So it's, there's some staggering numbers that, of course, you know, we, we just have to eat. And I understand about, you know, having some sort of bus system for people that want to go to the bars and have a good time or, you know, so they're being responsible, I do totally get that.
But if our numbers aren't showing it, then the numbers aren't showing.
Right.
That's, that's where I'm at, is the data is the one that's.
I'm just saying now, for our local businesses, the two, maybe this year, three bars or restaurants that are open.
Late nights.
Past your ten o'clock or ten-thirty.
Right, ten, ten-thirty, yeah.
Okay. Has their own shuttle.
Yeah.
And probably spends quite a bit of money to make sure that he has it.
Yes.
So these eight people can move.
Are there any questions online? Okay, do you want to make a, call the question on that? So the motion on the floor is to.
Cancel.
Cancel the, again, what we're going to call the midnight from K one bus, not anything else. And that would make it so the latest one would be leaving K one at around eleven. So all in favor of canceling that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, abstain? I just have it. You have a second part?
Yes.
Okay.
So the second part is, is I've, I've put together two scenarios. The first one has continuous service from eleven fifteen to eleven o'clock, eleven o'clock coming down from Killington. Uh, second scenario is.
Wait, can you, sorry, eleven fifteen to eleven, are you saying?
Excuse me, seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen P M.
Till, till eleven o'clock at night coming down.
Okay.
So it's a continuous bus doing back and forth, so it's actually two buses.
And this is all leaving K one, seven fifteen, and the last one leaves now at eleven P M.
Right.
The, the next one that I put together was.
The cost on that?
So total cost on that is ninety-four thousand four hundred and fifty-seven. And I have, I have printouts, if I can, if I can just give them to you so y'all can see it easy enough.
That'd be great. Thanks. Yes. I think there's two there.
We have another.
Yeah, there's plenty. Want to give one to Linda?
Yeah.
If anybody wants a copy, there's some here. So the top one is the ninety-four thousand four fifty-seven run?
Excuse me, sorry.
The top, the Rutland-Killington commuter, seven fifteen. So it leaves Killington at eight P M.
Yes.
And then the last one is eleven P M.
Coming down.
So it's. Because we knocked, we knocked, we knocked out the seven fifteen to twelve.
So that would, how would that change?
I mean, we knocked out the, oh, no, no, that's when it gets back down there.
So the town only paid for the very last run that you guys just discontinued. But there's, for the, the rest, the remainder of the evening, there's, the bus kind of eats the bill on that. So we run that bus basically on our, on our dollar.
So we, so this is what's confusing about this here. The first, what they're saying here is that the first bus leaves Rutland at seven fifteen.
Right, so it's, it's from K one is eight, nine, ten, and eleven.
Correct.
On the.
But, but, so seven fifteen, and it runs, because the last one is eleven, it ends at twelve P M in Rutland. So we're not canceling that out where we just crossed out. It's not in there. It leaves Rutland at seven fifteen, the day starts at seven fifteen, the night ends at twelve P M. Back in Rutland.
Right.
Oh, okay, right, yeah.
Right, so the last, the last run is eleven o'clock from K one. Okay, till whenever it gets to Rutland.
No, no, that's, so you cross out, don't cross it.
Yeah, right, yeah, right. So there's four, there's basically, there's four round trips per night.
So it's seven hours, a hundred and three dollars an hour, times a hundred and thirty-one days.
So that's two buses making two runs each?
Correct, well, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
The second, the bottom part here, the access commuter, I just called it that, would be a bus leaving at seven fifteen, leaving from Killington at eight, goes back to Rutland, leaves Rutland at nine fifteen, leaves Killington at ten o'clock coming down. And then I've added the second section of that would be to have a shuttle staying up here on the mountain, running from eight o'clock, coming down at eleven. So it'll just do continuous loops up here on the mountain, it'll stay up here, shuttling people back and forth from condos to restaurants, bars, wherever they need to go. Kind of like what you did back in the old day. And that's, and that'll come down at eleven, so that'll be your eleven o'clock bus coming down. So you'll have one at eight o'clock, ten o'clock, and eleven o'clock coming down.
So when we had this meeting, first of all, well, I mean, it's, we'll pull out discussion first, but when we had this meeting on Thursday, there were a few business people there, condo person, the, what is it, Killington Group or whatever? Killington Group was the condos, and then somebody from the car group, then from, from Liquid Art, okay? Myself, and then Kelly from the chamber. The town was putting in for the winter that thirteen, or seventeen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. This is not ever being paid, and when you say ninety-four thousand, that's the twenty percent, not the total cost.
That's the, that goes towards the twenty percent of the all-day.
Right, okay.
It's going towards the two hundred and forty-five thousand.
Right.
What's the ask? Like, we're getting a lot of information, what is, what are we being asked?
The ask is, what service do you want at night? And those are the prices for it.
And.
And right now, we're not paying anything.
So what I said at that meeting was, is that we took on that bus that we just canceled.
We just canceled.
Right.
Yeah.
But then there's a bus in the summertime that we pay, that has more. And that bus was fourteen thousand four hundred. Okay, but that bus is, we're covered for this, and I think we got a bill for higher. But it's being dropped because I said, no, we already have a contract.
Yeah.
So, but next summer, we're going to have to find out where the town wants to stay. Okay, if we want to. And I sat in this meeting, and I was there for about an hour and a half, and, yeah, about an hour, hour and a half, and I was just like, the businesses need to decide what they want. Maybe the town could kick something, well, maybe the town kicks something in, but they need to. And I was like, we're kicking in X amount per year we have.
That's the seventeen.
So that's the seven, that, that's the seventeen, no, that's for the.
For the winter season.
For the winter, that's all we were doing. So I said eighteen thousand, it's seventeen and change or whatever. So if the town continued to put in eighteen thousand, who is going to take the bill to them for, let's just say, seventy-six K here?
Right.
Or eighty K here?
Well, it's, but it's not, it's not the eighty K, because what it is, it's the local match. So it's the, you, you said you got what, twenty, two hundred and forty thousand dollar local match?
Yeah.
So this is only part of the local match.
This is what he's only asking for. This is what he's only asking for.
Okay, so you.
As a group.
How are you paying for the other local match?
We, we pay for it.
Okay, so the bus pays for it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah, yeah. This is their, this is their ask. And when I sat in with this group of the different businesses, I told you, I was like, I'm only one. I think the town should continue to do the eighteen thousand, okay? But not going to get us into a position where the bill for the ninety-five thousand or the bill for the ninety-seven thousand is coming to us and then nobody else kicks in the money. That's where, and then I left.
Yeah.
Because I didn't want to get into their, and I don't know if they've come back to you.
See, our, the actual grant is basically the last run, it runs until five fifteen at night. So five fifteen up here at seven, six and back, done at seven. That's what the actual grant is. We worked hand in hand with the businesses and, and the town up here to, to extend that service through the night. But it's, it's to the point that the buses, beside your contribution for that last run, the bus kind of eats the rest of it. And business standpoint, you can only eat it so long.
Right. They're a non.
Yeah.
They're a nonprofit and they really are.
Well, yeah, we're not, we're not getting rich here. We just want to level.
This stuff costs real money.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I, you know, and, and, and.
Do you have?
Some in the group said, no, like it's not, I don't have whatever. Others were like, this, but this, this bus, what he's talking about is more going to like the condos to High Ridge, right?
Yeah, it, it could service wherever you guys like. High Ridge, I mean, we used to, I remember back in the day, we used to do High Ridge, uh, through Mountain Green area, um, up, up the top. Right, straight down all the way. And I think we used to go to the Graybonnet as well, um, down on one hundred. So.
What kind of statistics or rider usage do you have during, you know, the seven fifteen to eleven or twelve, I guess, back? Like are you, is it, is it being used?
Uh, seven fifteen, uh, forty-one riders, um, I'm sorry.
Is this a week or a day?
So this is, um, here, I'll just look at it like this, yeah. So four fifteen, let me get later at night. Um, twenty-six, twenty-two, so over fifty riders per week, um, at eight fifteen. And then about fifty riders per week at nine fifteen. And then, um, same again at ten fifteen, around, around fifty.
So you're getting pretty.
So this is per day?
Pretty, yeah, so this is per day?
No, it's a bit.
Yeah, they're, they're probably getting people, they're probably getting people out of the condos and.
Right.
And some of the hotels, yeah, going to dinner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Hey Matt, welcome, welcome to town. Do you got seventy-six thousand dollars to extend the bus back to the Graybonnet?
Yeah, but it.
We just stole our money.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't go there anymore, but if you want to, for a price.
Yeah, we, we also got to go, in, in addition to the businesses, we also got to go to the resort because of the lodging bureau and stuff like that.
Do the, do the riders pay a fee?
No, they stopped at COVID, but it would take a little while to come in. And that's where the conversation went that day. Do you want to say something?
I was, I do, yeah. But I think somebody just asked a question and I don't know if you were asking.
No, Matt, he was just joking. He says they already spent all their money. They just bought a lodge last week. They don't have any money.
Well, any else that doesn't.
Any of our empties, I will donate back to you. Five dollars, you know?
Five cents a can.
Do whatever you can.
We need those for fireworks.
So, so, so we basically used to do, and I think you might have remembered a bill that you would pay like a hundred or a hundred and a quarter for an employee pass.
Right.
And give your employee a pass. Even that has stopped now.
I was on the committee like ten years ago.
That is.
With Richard Malan, Merard, do you remember him? Richard Malard, something like that? There was a committee, we met monthly and actually we met in the office that they're remodeling right now. And so there is probably thirty businessmen that paid, and I forget the amount, but they all paid.
Yeah.
A fee and donated to the bus and then they would get a stop in front of their business.
Yeah.
Right.
And so that went on until I left and I didn't know what happened to it at that point. But if you knew, it was a pretty well organized, it was raising a fair amount.
Two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven.
And the problem is service kept.
Stopping everywhere.
Stop, well, service originally stopped pretty much everywhere.
Yeah.
And then, like this conversation where we cut times, okay? So instead of continuous loops and buses from here, okay, slowly but surely, the service withered.
Yeah.
Well, that's when we started to do defined bus stops.
Yeah.
Because my understanding, if there were no defined bus stops, you had to stop everywhere as somebody was waving at you.
Yeah.
But if there was a defined bus stop, you would just stop at those.
I would, I would like to share that, um, just around the state, other resorts, um, ski resorts are paying the local match. Um, an example, GMT Stowe pays twenty-five percent and that's a rather robust service that they have there. Um, Ludlow does the same thing, Okemo. Um, every resort that has bus services is paying at least twenty percent of that local match. Ideally, moving forward, we would just look at the twenty percent and look for an annual, an annual agreement.
So I, I think to go forward, we need to make a motion. And I don't think there's a great defined.
There's not a more, there's not, there's not.
There's no motion on the floor and there's not really a great defined motion to make.
We left it with that group. I left.
This is kind of a discussion to let everybody know where we're at.
So we're just, you're not asking us to make a decision, you're just asking?
No, no, you don't need to make a decision tonight.
This sounds more.
Thanksgiving's coming fast though, I, I would say.
Because I don't believe it should just fall on town.
There was all, it can't fall on town.
There's no way.
You gotta get the businesses involved.
It's not, it's not, it's not.
So I don't think it's appropriate for us to.
Why, Village Development needs a transportation plan.
Yep.
Well, there is no Village right now, but so what, the conversation.
We're having to.
The, the, the conversation was is this group of like five individuals was supposed to go out and start some conversation.
Okay.
To see between condos, all businesses, that, that includes all businesses. We're not just going to say the resort, it's all businesses.
Yeah.
You know, there was mention of Great Golf.
Up and down the route.
You know, what I would, and what I brought up in the conversation is that going forward, when someone comes in with, say, anyone comes in with like a hotel that's on the route or whatever, or a new condominium complex or whatever, there should be annually, we need to get to, say, a hundred thousand dollars for, you know, in the next five years to cover something.
Is that the town's, you think that's the town's responsibility?
In zoning, in zoning, there are times, there, there are conditions that are put in that you must provide busing or whatever.
If we do like an ordinance or something like that.
No, 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 it's, it's the D R B can put conditions and say.
Their in-site plan review.
A site plan review that, you know, X, five thousand dollars a year goes to, if there is a condominium complex of whatever, a, a hundred condominiums or fifty, what, what, it's, it's something that planning can think about or D R B. But we're not going to settle that for this year, it's next year. And that's where I left that meeting and was very low on the thermometer that they were going to get back to you.
As an example.
We, we had some, we had some changes we wanted to make based on their asks on timing. So that's updated and we'll be getting back to them, but we.
Yeah, this isn't updated for the time that, um, they wanted, so.
But I didn't want to commit the town.
No, definitely not.
For that. I said, I would think that the town would say, it's already worked into the budget for the seventeen, whatever, up to eighteen thousand dollars, but we can't kick in the other seventy-something thousand dollars.
That's ridiculous.
And if we, and, and I didn't want us to get the bill for the full seventy-six thou, or ninety-four thousand or ninety, or ninety-seven thousand. And then we're cutting a check and we're collecting from that.
Right. I mean, we take, we take funds from Menden, Rutland Town, Rutland City, Killington, and that goes to our, our rideshare as well through, for the twenty percent as well, so.
How much was the Diamond Run Mall kicking in?
You know, I'm not sure.
That was part of their site.
That, yeah, I mean, I, I've been here almost twenty years on the bus and I was kind of kept in a corner for a long time, but.
But it was a good dollar.
It was, it was, because we actually changed the name of it to Diamond Express.
Right.
So, I mean, there is some options of reaching out, because we do pull into Hannover's Plaza at night. Um, which I know Rutland Town kicks in some funds towards that.
So, so that's just the update from the bus. I mean, the bigger one was the midnight one in the winter time and.
About how many businesses are you talking about Jim? Just a guess.
Well, it's, it's really hard, because, because when you say businesses, the condos are businesses because, you know, so they are businesses. And, and to me, to come up with a hundred thousand dollars between the condos.
Yeah, it's a lot.
And the businesses up the Killington Road and along East Mountain Road to High Ridge is, you know, it's not a lot. Now, I mean, I see Oleg back there, we're not talking about the pizza store. We're talking about like, you know, lodges. When I say businesses, that's lodges, okay?
Between the lodges and the restaurants.
The lodges and the, the lodges and the restaurants and the condominiums. So, you know, I want to be clear, that's what I mean by businesses. I'm not talking about, you know, the T-shirt, the T-shirts shop inside the market, you know?
All right, well, thanks for the information.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything for us to do on this.
When do you need a response back?
Thanksgiving is the first bus.
Yeah, I, we're, well, we're working on our, our winter schedule. So it's, you know, I, I know probably that the service is going to continue, just not sure which one and.
Okay.
I think we're at that point, but it's, it switches over on Thanksgiving, so.
So when you say it's kind of continuing.
I would, I don't want to sound like I'm holding anybody hostage, but Thanksgiving Day, if something's got, we're switching. So it's, I mean, I.
I mean, when you switch, that is your guys' business decision to do either one of these, right?
Well, no.
No.
That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out is, because this sounds like an internal business decision that the bus needs to make.
We can stop at five fifteen and not have no winter, no evening service.
Right.
That, that's what I was getting at, Ron. When you say we're going to have to do it anyway, that's kind of leading some people to think if none of the businesses kick in money.
Sorry, I mean, I was wrong where that started. I don't want to sound like that, I just, I, I hate to, to, I hate to not see the service.
Yeah.
You know, and, and again, it, I'm at the bus, so the last run's five fifteen up here at six o'clock.
Unless the town.
Unless, yeah.
Businesses come together.
We can't afford to keep eating that.
Okay, that's, so that's what the.
So for purposes of discussion, to keep bus service in the evening on either one of these schedules.
Yeah.
Okay, you need, although the number's not a hundred K, roughly a hundred K, the town has already committed to throw in seventeen K.
Yeah.
I rounded it to eighteen.
Okay, eighteen K, yeah.
Because it's seventeen and change.
Right, yeah, okay.
So they need to come up with eighty-two.
They need to come up, yeah. And, and that decision needs to be to you in time for you to set a schedule for the Thanksgiving weekend.
Yeah, so Jim, that was for last winter. We haven't done this winter yet, the seven, you know what I mean? That agreement was for.
No, I know.
Okay. Seventeen might grow.
That seventeen and change was for last winter.
Yeah.
But what I'm getting at is that.
We don't have numbers for this one?
No, but what I'm getting at, well, we have, no, we, we have the numbers. It's ninety-four thousand four fifty-seven or it's ninety-seven thousand. And I sat there in that meeting and said, I think I can get two of the board members, not sure which two, to say that we would continue to do what we did in the past.
Sure.
So I'm not, I'm, I'm saying eighteen thousand. I gave a little inflation from the seventeen and change to eighteen for them to come up with the eighty-two.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Yeah. But we're not being asked to go and get these people to do that.
They had a meeting with.
We're just giving you the service and the, the cost of it. Everything else is, that's between.
I'll reach back out to the president of the Chamber tomorrow.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's more where it's going. I don't think this is a select board.
Yeah, and the resort.
Pass that eighteen or whatever thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. But if we say, even if we said eighteen thousand now, it's not even going to get us a half a roof.
No. So like, we'll kick in that eighteen thousand, which is already budgeted for, so we don't need to do anything with that. As long as.
You get another eighty thousand.
Yeah, eighty something thousand.
But what Ron is saying, I get what Ron is saying, if the town is the only one, the eighteen thousand was last year. I'm saying we're only committing eighteen thousand.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I would, I would go as far as say that if, if the businesses are saying that they don't want to chip in, then there isn't a demand for it from the businesses and the town.
Well, there's a demand.
Well, we know there's, from the numbers, there's a demand, but it's not really servicing the town.
I have a question for Dick. So when all these condominiums came in like in the eighties, do you remember if there was any Act two fifty requirements that they needed to?
I don't believe so. Well, you know, there was more of a, well, there was no real bus to speak of back then. And it was more of, Killington said, we'll run a shuttle.
Yeah.
And they would service the four hundred acres, basically.
But so what I'm getting back is, back in those Act two fifty permits.
I would have to look and see if there was a specific.
If, if there was a condition because some people just.
I doubt, I would doubt it.
Putting money in.
Right, I would doubt it.
And the, and the bigger issue here is, is like saying this route here is going up to like ninety-four. Mountain Green kicks in how much already for their daytime?
Those three, those three, it's about a hundred thousand.
And where is it, that's what they're doing already or is that's where it's going?
Uh, that's what it was previous season.
And now it's going up to?
We're, uh, about one thirty, something change, one forty.
Yeah, so like thirty, forty percent.
Mountain Green, Pinnacle and Cascade, so.
Yeah, so they're jumping up thirty, forty percent.
And that's just a ski resort run. It doesn't go to the city or anything.
No, it just goes to Snowshet.
Yeah.
So, all right.
Okay.
It's a lot bigger than we think.
Yeah. All right, so I think we've had a discussion on that. Let's move on to the next item.
Thanks, bud.
Perfect, thank you. Can we be excused?
You can be excused.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the item is going to be van purchase parks and rec department.
Hi, I am Rebecca Caffrey, Director of Parks Recreation. I am coming to everybody. We have an approval from the Rec Commission to purchase a fifteen passenger van. This came up, uh, we run a camp, rec and trek camp that were mountain movers and they leave premises every day. I, uh, the, an old select board member purchased a van and had it and rented it back to the town in the amount of about five thousand dollars plus a cleaning fee of five hundred dollars every year. Um, so that he could do that, he is now, Robert Hecker is now selling that van. He wants to put it on the market. He is done owning a van. He is letting us have first right of refusal, um, right now and would sell it to us at thirty-six thousand dollars. You have a sheet that kind of shows the mileage. I pulled Kelly's Blue Book value. It is pretty dead on with the Kelly.
That was Kristen's report.
With the, um, Kelly Blue Book value.
Which one are you looking at?
Thirty-three.
It is a Ford Transit three hundred, three fifty passenger van, fifteen passengers. I have looked at trying to rent, if we tried to rent a van, you can't rent anything greater than a twelve passenger van. Um, and that would cost about six thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and forty-six cents for, uh, for the June through August. Cannot rent a fifteen passenger, so it would mean I'd be cutting three heads from an already small camp, which on the low end, I mean, because we have tiered pricing for residents, non-residents, if you buy the full summer or four weeks or weeks, on the low end, it would cost us or, you know, we would lose revenue of four thousand dollars at last year's camp prices. And on the high end, non-resident, some buying, someone buying weekly, we would lose revenue of six thousand six hundred dollars. Um, so I would like to purchase the van from the Heckers. Uh, we can store it, we don't have room at town garage, but we could, there's a spot to park it under the solar panels, not next to where you'd be charging a vehicle.
We have a firehouse on River Road that you just have to clean out and stick it in.
I, I, yeah, I do.
I'm going to make a motion to start the conversation for the town to move forward to buy a two thousand twenty-one Ford fifteen passenger van model, um, Transit three fifty X L T, I don't really care about the roof, with eighty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-six miles on it.
The roof is actually really critical. You can't get.
No, I know.
And that's one of the hard things. You can kind of stand up and not if you're tall.
Roof, yeah, yeah. So. So I made a motion and once again, guys, if someone just seconds it, you don't, you don't have to vote yes.
Second, second. Second, second.
Okay, so just get it going. So I just, is, do we know if it's diesel or not, Rebecca?
It's regular gas.
Regular gas, okay, um. Would, these are my questions, okay?
Okay.
Would Rob allow the town to have a mechanic of ours or, or someone take a look at it, just to verify that?
I will definitely ask.
And do we?
You can make it pending pass an inspect, inspection.
Yeah, and then my other question would be, is that, um. Do we know what, is this the Kelly Blue Book or whatever?
Kelly Blue Book, so what we have is, I pulled up the twenty twenty-one.
Three or four? Page four. The Ford Transit.
It kind of, it doesn't print very nicely off of Kelly Blue Book value, so there's different, like if you were to buy it from a dealer, you'd be looking at, you know, a fair purchase price of thirty-nine thousand. From a private party was thirty-six, eight, nine, seven, was around, the range was thirty-four, eight, thirty-four, eight to thirty-nine thousand. So he, the thirty-six kind of sits right in the middle, um, problem is you can't find this to buy, they're very, where, where they're located, so if we don't buy it, he's just going to take it and put it on the market for, I believe he said forty-four, because that's close to what he paid for.
So, my question, Rebecca, is on this Kelly Blue Book.
Mm-hmm.
Did you put in the mileage to get this?
Yes.
Okay, so that is verifying with the mileage.
Yep.
I know that's what they go for, but I'm just sitting here asking the question.
Absolutely.
People can, people can get the, going forward, so, um.
Do we have any, um, capital funds or anything allocated to this?
Uh, the rec has about a hundred and nineteen thousand-ish, um, and the rec commission did approve that we, they, they, the use of that to purchase the capital for the van to run the rec and trek camp. It would also benefit things like we give money to the active seniors to rent vans when they take some of their trips, we could use this for other things. So right now, we're looking at it as just a camp rental that we've done in the past, but it gives flexibility to become a rec, and we could offer other programming if we owned it.
We're looking at seventy-two, if, if the van lasts another five years. Twenty thirty-one, okay, five to six years, you're looking at seventy-two hundred dollars or less.
A year.
A year.
What, what's the yearly rental?
Uh, well, from Rob, from Rob, he gave us a deal five thousand, but I looked if we were to rent a twelve passenger van, couldn't find a fifteen, six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
But that's a great question, what Dick just asked, we, we, we're already giving five K to rent the van.
Yeah.
And then what are we paying on the, um, seniors to, we're probably kicking in a bunch of money there for that.
Yeah, I think we do about two thousand dollars a year then.
There's, there's seven K, that's all.
So really, it's just a.
So I, I mean, does any, if nobody has any, I'm voting yes, but I mean, it makes sense, five K we're already paying and then. Two K that we, we would be kicking back, so unless someone else has a question.
Is the van currently registered and all inspected, all up to date?
It is registered, it's inspected, it's up to date.
It's Rob.
I took a ride in it, I took a ride in it the other.
You don't know Rob?
I've never met the guy.
It's meticulous.
Okay.
This thing looks prob, this thing looks like a twenty-six.
It's garage steward, he stores it in the, in his garage.
Okay, who would be the driver of the van?
Well, we would have to, it's our, it's the camp counselors right now, um.
It's the same people that have been doing.
Same people that have been driving the past.
Same people have been driving the rented van.
Rob, it's the same van, Rob's not driving.
Okay, Rob doesn't drive, no, no, I just.
Rob's not driving.
So our liability hasn't really changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, how old are the drivers?
Yeah.
Uh, they have to be eighteen plus.
Okay, so our liability hasn't changed, was really the question I was asking, yeah.
So it's just pay more upfront versus continue paying basically the wash.
So no brainer to me.
Is CDL required for driving?
No.
Yes.
Oh, for?
Yes, it is, CDL, fifteen passenger is required.
Yeah, why don't you get over the.
Do we have eighteen year olds with CDLs?
Mm-hmm.
Well, okay.
We required it.
Oh, I stand corrected.
I think once you go over, what?
It's considered a school bus, so anything that's a nonprofit, a school, or, uh, something else.
But that's why you can't rent these really at a rental place, because once you say, I want a fifteen seater, they ask you for your CDL license, so they rent out twelve and thirteen seaters.
And they probably won't rent them to anybody low under twenty-five. You got to run different insurance on that, if you're owning it?
We've already had it covered underneath the rental.
Yep.
So there's, yeah, so it sounds like there's no change except for the payment.
Well, that's, we have it now, full-time, full-year, because it wasn't letting us use it in the, outside of the summertime.
Any questions before we go, questions, we started doing questions for the audience, so I want to make sure that you guys, you guys have questions, good?
No, just we, if we're going to use this in winter, then we need to really make sure we take care of it, because it's not going to last a five years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, any questions online?
I do think it's time that we clear out a bag in the cold firehouse on River Road.
It should be empty right, it's empty right now.
For now, then this is, park it, no, park, park it in there, so I'll call the question.
Go, call him a question, all in favor of, uh, going forward with the recommendation of purchasing the van from, uh, by the rec department or rec board, uh, say aye.
Thirty-six thousand dollars.
Using recreation.
Using recreation's capital, yeah, so it's no, it's not a new cost.
Right.
Okay, nah, yeah, so using money that's already been allocated through the capital. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, alright, let's have it.
That is, don't remember, the motion was, we're bringing it down to them, just to make sure.
Yeah, to a mechanic too.
To a mechanic inspection.
I'm assuming it passes inspection.
Did a mechanic once over.
Just because they might have an inspection on it.
Yep.
Four months ago, let's just make sure, the brakes are in good condition.
Yeah, tires are good, all that.
That could be just a Midas or whoever, I really don't care, whoever the town uses.
Um, if that was a cost, would that be a cost that we would absorb, like?
No matter what, it's our due diligence.
Our due diligence, we're okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so moving on, sale of town truck, letter, garage.
I'll make a motion to go ahead, so we can start the conversation.
Do we have the letter that I had?
I had it on his email.
Yeah, oh, there it is. Um, alright, so you want to start a motion in favor of?
Oh, so since it's a letter, I will select one members, last week, one of our new guys, not really that new, I don't think, but hit, hit, hit a moose, ba, 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 it doesn't really care. Um, he's looking for a truck or a car, we, we've had a two thousand and nine Ford pickup truck that is nothing but a junkyard at this point.
It's a yard truck.
We're wondering if we would be willing to sell it to this person, went on to Kelly Blue Book, and the suggested price is forty-five hundred to forty-eight hundred dollars. He'd be willing to pay the forty-five hundred dollars, I think this, this is from the foreman, I think this would be a good move for both parties. As of now, that truck needs tires and a few services to get inspected, which would cost the town more money than it's worth. So-and-so's father owns such-and-such workshop or whatever, so he was willing to fix it up at a reasonable, to be a reliable source of transportation. So I make a motion to move ahead to sell it to the person, as is.
As is.
Okay, as is, because I don't want to hear them later on, the truck, the, the, the pickup doesn't leave until we have a clear check.
Yeah, uh, so can we, hold on, can we give a second on, on the approved to sell it before we open the talking?
Okay, then we're having a discussion.
Yeah, yeah, so can I get a second on?
Selling the truck.
Selling the truck.
Second please.
Second, alright, go, go ahead.
Uh, so from what I gathered from the individual today, since I work with him all day, because he would like to pay three thousand, five hundred dollars, so he has money left over to fix the truck. He probably is not willing to pay forty-five hundred dollars.
So then I think we just kicked his, I mean, this is, we're getting paperwork saying forty-five hundred, forty.
Well, right, right now, the, the motion is to sell the truck, we didn't specify the price, or you specified the price on here in the motion.
I'm going by what a foreman gave us, saying that they, he'd be willing to sell it forty-five hundred to forty-eight hundred, I mean, you know.
Kelly Blue Book price.
Well, no, it says, I mean, it's probably junk, whatever.
It's, it's his better day, for sure.
Yeah, and you're familiar with the truck?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, just that's it, never gets used.
Right, is, is, that's what I'm saying, is it worth squabbling over the, you know, get, get a thousand dollars from him or not?
Well, I'm going to go back to the same thing that I did with buying something that's in better shape, like. I don't know what condition it is, I'm not going to go down and start talking to people that want to buy equipment from us, it's not our job.
Right.
Okay, so what is Kelly Blue Book on it, just someone telling us, I don't have what Rebecca did.
Right.
She gave us something, what is Kelly Blue Book, and I don't really know what the condition of the truck is, I mean, um, if it's.
That's what I'm saying here, if we're being told that it's a piece of junk, it's a piece of junk, you agree it's a piece of junk, it's a yard truck, doesn't leave the yard.
I have a bigger question.
Is there a, um?
I have a bigger question, if it's a piece of junk, then why has it been sitting around, and why are people driving it around?
They did use it quite a bit last year, I saw it out and about quite a bit.
That's what I mean, so, so, so I'm just, these are, like, just because I get a letter from someone that says they want to buy something or a foreman saying, one of his guys wants to buy something, I mean. I don't know what condition it is in, and I know it was driven around last year, and if it, if it was drivable last year and it was registered and insured and inspected. Then how did it get into a piece of junk this year?
I thought the plan with that was to actually sell it, because that's why they ordered that fifty-five hundred with the stipulation that truck was going anyways.
I thought that was meaning sold.
So what would be the trade-in value of that?
I agree with you on that, but I mean, I think it was originally the plan originally was to get rid of it.
But that would be my next, these are my questions, like, first of all, is it in good shape, I, you know.
Well, we just sort of, not.
I, I, we don't.
I'm not a mechanic, all I know.
Yeah, okay.
And I've been gone for a year and a half, so I mean, I've just seen it driven around.
Same thing, like, send this to a mechanic to see what needs to be done, find out what the Kelly Blue Book is, and also find out, it's a Ford, what the trade-in would be, value.
Yeah, okay, I, I, whether or not it's mechanically sound and we should sell it, okay, I just have one question, how do we normally liquidate equipment?
Normally, we would turn it into the dealer.
Trade in or you trade them out.
But no, no, okay, so we don't normally sell business, sell equipment into the open market?
Well, we would put it out for people to come and look.
Yeah.
Okay.
The buyer department.
The last truck we sold, sold online, basically.
You know, but it was put out there, it wasn't someone coming in and saying, I want to buy it, but the other thing is, is that, you know, in the past, what I have seen, other than that one that went online, because it never hit us. You know, like the trucks, the bigger trucks, we would normally go to the resort and say, this is what we can get for a trade-in, Ricky would go and get a trade-in value for it.
Do you want it?
And this, and do you want it for this trade-in value, that's, and then the resort would normally take it and run it for another fifteen years.
I mean, if the Kelly Blue Book says forty-five hundred, the trade-in value is going to be about two thousand.
Right, but I mean, it's easy to, you know, once again, all I'm saying is the same thing like this, you go, I mean, this is a Ford, that's a Ford, bring them both to, don't we deal, don't we deal with the Ford dealer out in?
Greens.
Yeah.
Truck from Formula One.
You know, or Formula One, and what's the value of it and on both of them?
Well, it's uninspected at this point, so.
Yeah.
You're going to have to send them to wherever to get that price on it via record.
I, that.
No, I'm just telling you the facts.
I, yeah, I know, but, but, but then the, the facts just bring me up, I'm being told that this thing is being driven around on town property and it's not inspected, I mean.
If it's, it's a yard truck, you don't need it on the.
I have a center for that.
Okay, so, 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 so we're, we're, we as a town know, we all, now, now we all know, because now I just found out. That we're allowing someone to drive a truck around the, the town property that cannot get inspected.
It's not certified for operation.
Right.
Yeah.
But you can do that on your own property.
You can do that, yeah.
You can do it on your own property, this is a town putting a person.
It's a property though.
It's a liability.
No, no, it's a liability, it's a, you're, you're, you're putting the town at a liability.
Hey, Bill, would you ever have a, a van or a truck on the birch ridge and know that you can't get it inspected, because normally it means like, the, 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 the frame is rusted out. Or the floorboards, or the brakes are shot or whatever, and say, hey, listen, it's on my property, let's just boom.
Yeah, it's a front truck.
You know, all things considered, I would sell it for the forty-five hundred, be done with it, and then you have no more questions, it's done, it's over. You're not going to have the expense of towing it to Rotland to get inspected, the inspection price.
If we're being told by the foreman, it's a piece of junk, and this is the, the Blue Book value, yeah, we don't have the printout, but we're, that's the same information. We don't, I don't think we need a mechanic to check that, because we're selling it, if we're buying it, yeah, but if we're selling it, like, get what we can get.
All I'm at is, I just want a Blue Book number, she didn't, she didn't go to get that, I don't know the numbers, I, I don't know.
It says around here, Kelly Blue Book, suggested price of forty-five, forty-eight.
Hey, hey, can I sell you my nineteen, um, thirty-eighth, uh, my nineteen ninety-seven, because I wrote on a piece of paperwork that it's worth twelve thousand.
We've got to trust Chad. We have to trust Chad, yeah, we have to trust Chad.
Basically, the question for me comes down to, do we want to hold on to this for some reason, or do we want to get rid of it, I thought we were.
It was supposed to go, that was part of the deal.
But it was supposed to go to the Ford dealer or whoever we were getting it, and how much were we going to get it for the last time? And if we want, if we're here to help, then let's say the dealer for the sale, for selling us a fifty-five hundred, or five fifty?
I think it was a, uh, five fifty.
A five fifty, for them to get that sale, what if they were offering us eight grand or nine grand for this? I don't know, I don't know all the information, that's all.
If you guys want to sell it.
I would just, I would just reach out to the salesman you dealt with down there and ask them what they would take for it, for what they would, if you traded it in.
How much is the truck that you're buying?
I think they already got it, but I, so that's the other, I don't know why we didn't trade it in then, that's all I'm getting at.
Well, we, yeah, we didn't, so now we have to get rid of the truck.
Do we need any other trucks from Ford that we can hand, I guess my question is just pretty simple, if we need another truck, what would be the trade-in value of that?
And what they're telling us is the Blue Book value is forty-five, forty-eight, trade-in is typically less than that. So, less than forty-five to forty-eight.
We were also told that he would like to buy it, and it's kind of leaning on to the forty, Dylan would be willing, willing to pay forty-five hundred.
Okay.
Now it's thirty-five hundred.
Well, no, it's not, you go by the letter.
If you want to go by the letter.
You make the motion to sell it for forty-five hundred.
Well, that was my motion, but then someone came in and said, he doesn't want to pay that, he wants to pay forty-five hundred.
You stand here and you have the letter that says forty-five hundred.
That's where I started off, Dick.
And it's Chad's responsibility to follow the letter he wrote.
My motion is then to stop this conversation, my motion is to sell the truck for forty-five hundred dollars.
So that's the motion that's already on the floor.
Right.
Yep, alright, so do you want to just call the question on it?
Sure.
Alright, all in favor for selling the truck, or giving the foreman the authority to sell the truck at the listed value here, forty-five hundred?
I, I still have a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Before your call question, and that is, again. Do we need to put this in front of the citizenry to see if somebody wants to buy it for forty-seven hundred?
Normally, the thing would go out, but whatever, and I'm not going to say.
You don't.
Well, I, I, I know, but, but we've had issues where, yeah.
You don't treat me like you treat them.
Properties have been, people question stuff that previous select boards had done, okay, and, you, you, I want to make sure that.
But even though that, even what you're talking about was done right, it was done right, it was done right.
I'm just saying, people have checked.
But to this thing here, it's like, I agree with you on this.
People question, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not trying to raise the old issue.
Well, my motion is not for the foreman to go ahead to sell it, my motion is for the town to move forward to sell it.
To sell it, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a diesel?
I think, is somebody binging in there?
No, that's my pocket.
Oh, that's your pocket, okay.
Ricky, is this a gas or diesel?
It's a gas.
Gas.
Okay.
Okay, so right now, the motion on the floor is move forward with the sale, um, as indicated in this letter, right?
For forty-five hundred dollars.
Forty-five.
As is.
As is. Uh, any other questions in here, for us, no, in the room, online, no, alright, so all in favor of selling this truck, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, all abstaining.
If, if, if he comes back and says, not to the forty-five hundred, I suggest then, we put it out as Bill is saying.
Right, because if that, because then that'd be less than the Blue Book value.
That's all.
Alright, move in. Alright. Moving on.
What time is it?
It is seven forty-three. Personnel policy review number three.
Can we, were we gonna have copies this time with the changes? That's what we asked for the last meeting.
Well, we're going through the edits.
Okay, I thought we were gonna have for this meeting. Can we just have it up on the screen then? I thought we were gonna get a copy with the changes.
We left off at section fifteen.
Fifteen.
Can we, um, go back to section seven? Hate to do this to you.
Sure.
Um, which is hours of service. And this right now says, regular hours for persons employed at the town office or other town offices shall be nine to four-thirty, Monday through Friday.
I think we did make a, a note to change it to eight-thirty to five.
Well, what it, what it should be is that the office out, the office will be open daily from nine to four. The town clerks will be open, uh, uh, daily from nine to three. And just leave it at that, because employees are in and out, and to commit employees to a certain number of hours at a certain location isn't, isn't realistic. But if we just say that the office, which I think is the goal of this, will be open from nine, um, from nine till four daily.
Definitely a personnel policy, though.
I, I don't know. I mean, um.
Well, it probably, it has been. Where we went with this, Dick, was because it said a different period that, and it didn't include, it, it, I don't think it included the lunchtime or in there.
Yeah.
And it didn't come out to a forty-hour week.
No, it didn't. It comes to seven and a half hours a day.
You know.
Um, so I mean, I, I think it, it, because you don't wanna, I don't think you want to restrict the town employees. Cause a lot of them, you have appointments other places, you're meeting with people, um, but as long as the office itself is open from nine to four, I think that's the goal.
I got my directives.
Yeah, there you go. And, and so, whether that's in the personnel policy or not, I think that, that is a better approach.
Where I was going with it is that it's an eight-hour day.
Right.
And it included, to me personally, it should include a half hour for lunch, and wherever I went to, lunch is, you're getting paid for that eight-hour day.
Yeah, but in my case, I mean, I, I eat lunch at my desk every day.
Okay.
You know, I don't, you know, so I'm there eight hours, eight hours a day, and if somebody comes in while I'm eating lunch, I put it aside and talk to them.
That's your decision. I'm just saying for others.
I understand that.
I'm saying it's an eight-hour day.
Yep.
And it includes either the fifteen minutes or a half hour for lunch. And it's up to the person if they wanna sit at their desk and still talk to them.
So are you saying just strike that, strike it?
I'm saying it should be an eight-hour day, and it includes.
So regular work hours for a person employed at the town office or other town offices shall be an eight-hour day?
Well, what, what, I, I, I agree with Dick. A regular work hours for a person employed, employed in the town of Killington.
Yeah, and, and a lot of people like, I'm on, a lot of people are on salary. And so, I might work, I might go to a meeting and work ten, eleven hours in one day, and then, then maybe on Friday I'll go home an hour or two early. You know, to make up for it, because, you know, so to.
I agree. I, I, I think we want to have this regular work hours and then have, except for this, except for that, except for this. It's like, this doesn't mean anything.
The goal is to have the office opened and manned, weekdays from nine to four.
Working hours for a person employed with the town of Killington shall be an eight-hour day.
I think it should just be that.
An eight-hour day.
Yeah, I mean, I just get rid of all of it, personally.
I, I agree, cause I think, I think what, what you're saying is important, and I think that's accurate. I don't think that's necessarily needs to be in the personnel policy.
No, but, but, the other thing shouldn't be either, because I think it's too restrictive.
I agree.
And, and I don't think it does the town any good to, to be that.
I just find it, to throw it out there, cause I know there's a bunch of people in town running around going, why was Jim in the office at ten o'clock at night? Why was Jim in the office on Saturday? You know, cause Jim had to go to the bus, Jim had to go to another meeting, Jim was doing some TIF stuff, and then Jim had to get in on a Saturday because I had permits that had to get done, and I wasn't charging for my hours for the TIF. Just getting it out there.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
But anyone else that was in planning or the other stuff was getting paid for going to that meeting.
But you're getting paid for your twenty-five hours.
You know, no, no, this is when I was salaried.
Okay, okay.
Or hourly, or whatever you wanna talk full-time. But people in town were running around going like, why is he in the office at ten o'clock at night? Cause I had to get my regular job.
Absolutely.
I had to get the permits out because you know, zoning, and they say it has thirty days, or else it passes anybody.
Number of people go in on Saturdays or holidays to, to do their work.
Right.
And I find, you know, that's fine, as long as the office is open from nine to four every day, or the doors from nine to three.
Right.
That's Julia Roberts.
Public hours are from nine to three.
Yeah.
We're there from eight to four.
You're there forever.
Otherwise, we don't have time to do our work, cause people are, they're coming, they're knocking at the door at eight-thirty. I'm like.
Yeah.
No, we're not open yet. Go away.
And darn the last budget, Patrick.
So I'm gonna push, um, push on that. Would the, this board like to just change that to say a regular, basically just saying a regular eight-hour day?
Yeah, the office will be open, well, we can give hours for, yeah, a regular eight-hour day. But there are no regular eight-hour days.
Or just say an eight-hour day then, that's fine. Regular work hours for a person employed.
Town will be open between the hours of.
Again, I don't think the personnel policy is the appropriate place for that. We did.
But the way it was working.
I was shot down last week when I wanted to talk about something in the past.
I, cause you're not Dick.
Question. I mean, I was.
You were.
Yeah.
That's I, again, I think we're gonna.
You were Dick? I was shot down when I wanted to bring up something we talked about before, so.
And I don't wanna keep kinda going back.
We don't know if Dick's gonna be here next week or a month or whatever, when we get to the.
We're taking his sage advice.
There you go.
So, I think, I think that's a fair point to put in, and we're going to readdress all this stuff once we make it through one time. So let's bump back up to section fifteen, uh, use of town equipment. Uh, we are, we are asked to skip this section, right, the first part?
The person was supposed to get the, um, verbiage. We don't have that.
We don't have that verbiage, so we will, this is something we will have to come back to. Uh, section fifteen A, use of personal equipment for town business. Anyone have notes or comments written down for this?
I'm gonna go back first. Go up to fifteen or whatever, I mean, you're reading all of this stuff here, and I'm sorry, no, fifteen, okay? Use of town, except it's provided in the, the use of section sixteen, the town, the use of town equipment for, uh, property for personal use is strictly prohibited. So, you know, I've been told that a contractor has been using our truck and our grader for a job that they were given, and that specifically says no.
Curious, may, this may be changing. So I don't know if we should discuss it now, because this may not be the version that we're being handed.
Okay, I'm just getting at that it's prohibited, in the current, in the current.
We haven't edited any of this.
Yeah, so, so if you have, someone has prohibited, I'll talk to Dick and let him know about that.
I have, this is the current
Yeah, 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 so if you, if you've identified an issue that may be going on,
Yeah.
tell Dick about it, so he can address it. But I don't think that addressing that issue while we're doing the personnel policies. But yeah, no, if you, if you, if you know something that's not in policy.
I thought we also asked at the last meeting to find out if we can, certain things. Is that what we're waiting for?
I don't, what are you looking for? I, this is the first I've heard of this, of the use of town equipment.
I think there's been a question going around, especially when it was for plowing, if we didn't know we were gonna have enough plow trucks.
Yeah, can you?
Well, but that, that, that would be like, if, if you hired a private contractor and they had to use town plow trucks, that would be a contract. And so that, you know, you talk insurance, you talk usage, all that stuff. So that's not a personnel thing, that's a contract, um, business.
And, and this, and this here, you gotta remember, I, this is for employees using stuff for personal equipment.
Yep, right.
So for instance, let's say the town needed a piece of equipment, or Killington needed a piece of equipment, and the town had it, so we lent, lent it to them or something like that. Okay, that's not covered by this.
I'll talk to you separately.
Okay, but that's, but yeah, but, yeah.
Alright, so on fifteen A, use of personal equipment for town business.
Right.
Does anyone have an issue with that part of it? The fifteen A, not fifteen. Fifteen, we're gonna come back to.
And a reminder that everything that's in italics is things that was part of the melding of the existing and then the potential new.
I think the cell phone rate is actually lower than it used to be. Used to be forty and then fifty if you used it to get your email.
Well, can we, can we check on that? Do we have an older one? So yeah, just make a note to have it, unless we want to lower it for some reason, but I think keeping it the same.
I thought it was twenty-five.
Well, we will check.
Find out what it was, and I think the average phone nowadays is thirty dollars. No, you get onto AT&T or whatever. I pay, I pay seventy with, yeah, but I pay for full.
Yeah, full coverage, yeah.
Unlimited.
Lot of gigs.
Talking overseas.
So you're saying that the.
The base.
The base is, okay, yeah, okay. Right, right, cause that, that rate should not, the rate should not su, uh, go past what you are paying.
You can get a consumer cellular flip phone for thirty dollars a month.
I don't get that. Alright, any issue with the, those employees who use their personal vehicles for town business authorized by town manager will reimburse the county a year determined by IRS for basic mileage?
Yeah.
So the previous board where we started going on that, those employees who use their personal vehicles, and then I think it was just a flat, five thousand dollars and you don't get to use the town car?
That, are you talking about the?
So the town manager, so, so in the previous, it was Tommy Nellie put down in the contract for the town manager
Right.
that not use the town vehicle, cause there's this one little tiny crappy car.
Again, that'd be a, a special thing from a contract. This is all employees.
Well, those employees who are authorized by the town manager, uh, tho, those employees who use their personal vehicles for town business.
Yeah.
Authorized by the town manager.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, that's that sixty-something cents or seventy-two cents.
Seventy cents, yeah.
Seventy cents.
Somewhere in seventy cents.
And how much, you know?
Yeah, well, that's up.
So do you, is there something you wanna change on there?
I mean, I guess it's either or. I mean, it's either at a, at that rate, if we're gonna lock ourselves in, or I think a fire chief was asking us for like five thousand dollars a year instead of getting into the, to the paperwork or whatever, and you know that he uses, or she, whoever the chief's gonna be in the future or whatever, you know that they're gonna use it more than five thousand divided by seventy cents.
Again, that's something at contract times you'd be discussing. This is the flat base. Are we saying, we're still saying that for your base employee coming in, using their vehicle, they can, that it's okay for, to bill mileage?
Yes.
And with approval of town manager?
Yeah, and that's always been the case.
Yeah. So, do you have anything with that?
I, I think the definition then is singular use or more than, that, those employ, I mean, this is like, we get into these policies and then it's like, you end up not following the policy because it really doesn't have.
That's not the discussion here.
Those employees who use their personal vehicles for town business as authorized by the town manager, so.
If they need to drive to Montpelier, if they need to drive to Rutland, like, for your stuff going out to sites, I know you don't bill mileage, but that would be approved.
Well, I kinda did, because I had a contract with, not a contract, I had a conversation with the town manager, that that got up from the sixty-eight to the seventy-three.
Right.
But that's a different thing. What I'm getting here is, is that, do you really want every single time that they have to go and talk to the town manager?
Well, they have to.
You have a general, you have a general.
Family expense report.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So I mean, if, if, so everybody puts their mileage into Mona, if Mona has something that says, you know, this employee wants five thousand dollars for mileage this month, then, then you're gonna question it, and you're gonna say, no, you're not gonna do that.
Well, it happened, right, with the wit, Mona? It happened with the fire department with their, like, how much wit? Ten, eleven?
It was.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Uh, one of the firefighters put in their mileage for fire training, it was like ten thousand dollars. Again, that should be, so that's authorized, the key term here is authorized by the town manager.
Right.
So. Alright. Uh, next one, in case an employee involved in automobile, uh, automobile accident using a personal vehicle while traveling town business, the town will reimburse the insurance deductible of all employees in the amount not to exceed fifty-dollar comprehensive two hundred collision.
I don't believe in that. I think that if we're going to give in your car insurance plan, and the town is saying your car insurance is acceptable, then whatever is on the deductible and the comprehensive, the town is saying. Because on one hand, you, you know.
Well, I mean, to that, I mean, you guys asked me about the age of drivers and insurance and stuff, so there's what the LCT.
Seventeen-year-olds may drive on public roadways.
Yeah, so if you go to the second page.
Only if.
So, so the second page, the, the full paragraph here, it says, even if they drive a, a personal vehicle for municipal reasons, their personal insurance may be primary, but they could still be, have access to the town's ten million dollar limits as excess liability.
So, so really, it should.
So it's a double coverage, kind of, that, you know, you have your own personal insurance, and that V L C T or passive.
So this is, this is, I would not recommend engaging minors under eighteen into, due to their age. They simply don't have enough driving experience.
Right.
An accident would, even if they drive a personal vehicle for municipal, so this is saying for under eighteen.
Yeah, and, and even under seventeen-year-olds cannot transport more than three passengers.
Right, but if you're over eighteen.
And you have your C D L.
No, but if you're, if you're over eighteen, it's saying, and this here is saying that if you're over eighteen, forget about the seventeen or whatever, if an employee's involved, you're only gonna give them fifty dollars, and what if they have a two hundred and fifty dollar?
That's what I'm confused about. I would, I would think that the accident would fall under the town's insurance.
Right. Yeah, so you have your personal insurance, and then the town V L C T picks up whatever.
Yeah.
So you, you know, if it's more than whatever their limits are, then the town, or then the passive or V L C T will pick up up to the ten million dollar limit that the town has, according to this last paragraph.
And what you're saying is, you think we should just take out the, the numbers?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, guys, but it says here, this paragraph is talking about somebody that's under eighteen.
Yeah.
I would not recommend engaging minors under eighteen.
No.
I would like the question, then, I guess we found that out, okay, but that, there, even if they drive a personal vehicle for municipal reasons, so I'm seventeen years old, I'm driving my truck, you say it's okay. I get into a car accident, or somebody hits me. What they're saying is, is that they're personal, my insurance will be the, my, may be the primary. So it's all coming on to me, whatever, but they could still have access to the town's ten million. So if I only have insurance for two fifty for liability or whatever, right? And somebody sues me because I did something really wrong, and I'm sued for a million dollars, okay? The town would cover that two fifty to the million, maybe.
Yeah, because it'll probably go through a lawyer in court and everything else before that million's paid out.
Right, but that's what this is saying, but it's saying it for someone underneath the age of eighteen years old.
Where do you say under eighteen?
The first sentence. I would not recommend engaging.
I think, I think that's gonna be the same for.
The clause that we're discussing had nothing to do with age. It had to do with, are we going to reimburse people for their deductible if they get into an accident while they're driving their car on town business?
And I think they should be, I think they should be fully.
Right, you're saying, you're saying they shouldn't say fifty or two fifty, it should just say, you're deductible.
Right.
And the town policy should be, nobody under eighteen will drive a town vehicle.
Basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I think, I think that.
Except for what we just approved.
Because they have to have a C D L, it'd be eighteen to drive that.
So that C D L is not C D L, that's like a chauffeur's.
Right, yeah, it's a different, it's a different class of C D L.
You'd be eighteen, huh?
Yeah, you do.
Yes, but it's not like a.
But it's not a truck seat.
They couldn't, they couldn't drive.
They can't plow?
They can't plow, no.
When you say C D L, it's pretty generic.
So would everyone be okay with this changing the language of C to just saying, the town will reimburse the insurance deductible? Um, just that, the deductible.
After review, I would say.
After review of town, by town manager?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so let's, yeah, basically take out the second part of it.
I mean, and then maybe the town manager will come to us and tell us what we're expecting for someone to have for coverage.
Yeah.
If they're gonna use their car.
Right, you need to have acceptable.
People have different deductibles.
Yeah.
Some people have a two thousand deductible, some people have a two hundred deductible.
Right, and so I think if someone were coming to town manager and said, yeah, my deductible's ten thousand dollars, like, well, maybe we don't wanna.
Somebody has zero.
We don't want to take your insurance.
Right, I mean, we don't want you to drive your car to wherever you're going.
Yeah, cause your insurance coverage isn't.
It's not there, yeah, yeah, okay, so, uh.
And you're driving an old town.
I would just put in there, lender, like, question mark or asterisk, for, for someone to come up with what coverage is expected to be using your car. So someone to come up with what coverage is expected to be using your car.
Well, I don't wanna get into people's personal insurance. I mean, either you have a policy, because people have different insurance, different deductibles for different reasons. You know, you may have somebody that has a bunch of speeding tickets and has a high deductible.
Well, that's, I think that's why the not to exceed was in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you could change it to not to exceed five hundred dollars.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think two fifty is fair.
Okay, two, yeah.
Well, the fifty-dollar comprehensive.
Yeah, the fif- the fifty-dollar seems...
And I would say a lot of people probably have, I mean, I'm gonna just go, show of hands, how many people have two hundred and fifty dollar deductible? Does anyone know what they have on their deductible?
Well, yeah, mine's like seven fifty or something.
I have a thousand dollar deductible on mine because you get a little tiny ding on your front bumper, it's two thousand dollars anyway.
Right, censors.
You know, and then you're gonna save on your...
So do you want them to put it, of saying not to exceed and then just give a higher dollar now, five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars?
I would, I would say the five hundred dollars.
Five hundred, okay.
Go in between, like...
And, and that, we're not gonna just make a distinction between comprehensive collision, it's just...
Not to exceed five hundred dollar deductible.
The town will kick in.
Yeah, to cover your deductible.
Yeah.
And if you're wanting it into either or, comp, comp, either or comprehensive collision. So then the next question is you're giving them five hundred per?
No.
No, that's why you take out.
Yeah, so you say, change five hundred total, yeah, um, all right.
Reimbursed the insurance deductible of the employee.
Use of town compute, sixteen, use of town computer system, the town computer system is not to be used by employee for the purpose of conducting town business. Uh, does anyone have issue with this?
You said not, it is to be used.
Sorry, it is to be used by employee. Does, no one in town can use their computers. Uh, it looks like there is no change. No change to any of this. Did anyone have issue with any of this? It seems pretty boilerplate of.
Was there a change above there, Linda? Right, no, right there, supervisor?
Well, I was just, I made a notation as to whether it should be town manager, um, I T person.
I, I don't think any employee should be introducing software unless, unless they get permission from...
Well, yeah, it'd be permission. Should be town, would be town manager?
Yeah.
Well, you'd, you'd call your I T person.
Yeah, and or I, that's what I said, town manager and I T.
But town manager would be the one granting authority.
Right, and then if you needed to get, have, make sure you're doing it correctly.
Yeah, should go ahead and call them that.
Town manager should contact I T.
Okay.
Yes, I think, yeah, I think that's a good flag of changing that to town manager.
I personally think that, you know, the town's buying the so- any software that's going on to a computer is bought by the town, and so why is the employee, right?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's...
Maybe, maybe that, that paragraph is saying that any, any, any software put onto a town, um, employees or, or, or on a, on a town computer shall be provided by the town's proper...
Yeah, but, but there's, sometimes there's specialized programs. I mean, there's planning and zoning programs that are very specific to what you're doing.
Right.
And so you may, you may go to a conference and buy some software.
And I'm not gonna come in and download it on to...
No, but you're gonna talk to the town manager and your I T guy is gonna say, oh, this is decent software, we can download it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think everyone's saying the same thing in that sense, or that, but I think, I think that should be changed to town manager just for clarity.
Agreed.
Yeah.
All right, uh, section seventeen eligibility for benefits.
There has been...
There is a change with an or in here. There's only one, one, I believe it's in A.
So for parent, for, um, leave, for domestic, for parental and family leave?
We're not down there yet.
Where is that?
Well, section A and B.
Oh.
Seventeen.
Okay. Eligibility for benefits, sorry.
So the or, was the or added?
No, uh, it was part of the, I'm not sure why.
Okay.
So our election is because we have...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
People that are elected that are full-time, and some people will argue that they shouldn't have health insurance, but they're full-time and they're elected and they should because they're full-time.
Yeah, I, I also look at it another way, okay? If people are covered by their spouse, okay, then they don't have insurance to the town, but they may elect at some later date because of some personal issue with their spouse's insurance to take up town insurance.
That's, that's, I'm sure if the data, if it's date of hire, by the election means like by, by, by the people, or is it election?
Election by the public, yeah.
Yeah, right.
What, what, what is the election?
Now I see how you're reading it.
Yeah, yeah.
The town office group insurance programs for the benefit of eligible full-time employees.
Yeah.
Details about those benefits as they exist are included as an attachment to this policy. Why are you gonna get into it? Because like you said, it could be, you're hired, now you can't.
Now you can't, yeah, right, yeah.
You know, so just get rid of that part.
Strike that middle.
The town office group insurance programs for the benefit of eligible full-time employees, detail about those benefits are included as an attachment to this policy.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly, just strike that out. I don't think B is anything. And...
I, I, I don't have health insurance, so I'm just sticking here on, the town reserves the right to change insurance carriers here, or to add the leave or amend insurance benefit programs in its sole discretion. To change the amount or percentage of its contribution to the cost of any group health insurance program, employees will be provided with notice of it, change in the contribution rate, and I really do believe that you cannot have a budget and then tell everybody that they're paying, let's say, three percent at this current time, and it pa- and it passes, and then come in in September and say, now it's twenty percent. I, I, I think the wording there has to be that something in there to work at what, because you'd...
For like the next budget year, basically, yeah.
That's what I think, this is just the contribution rate, okay? That's what I'm talking about. I don't think it's fair on a contribution rate of saying it's three percent now, and then if all of a sudden you say, no, we're going to twenty percent next week.
The trouble with that though is that insurance carriers change their policies at their own discretion and they'll tell the town, oh, your rates are going up, and it may, they may go up in September.
But we, but we know what the, no, we get the price, we already know what twenty twenty-six cost increase is going to be, and they're all going up, they've, they've been saying that.
Yeah, but I, but when, but when, when the budget was put together, we didn't, I, I see what he's saying, but I agree with you, I think the town just has to suck it up.
Yeah.
We agreed to three percent.
Yeah, because we, we said to our employees, okay, as of...
It's a benefit.
Well, let's, let's say your insurance policy was a dollar.
Right, yeah.
So if you say three percent, it's three cents.
Right.
If it goes up to two dollars, the town's cost went up double, but the employee's part went up double to six cents now.
Yeah, if you use...
Right, the rate's still the same, yeah.
So you're, you're, yeah, you're talking about...
The percentage is...
Sorry, sorry, the percentage is the same.
Okay, we, I doubt the town knows what the insurance carrier's gonna charge us for insurance starting January first, because that's not the way the state of Vermont works.
Well, we do our budget that starts July one.
Right, but, but, but the, but the budget period from just January first to June thirtieth is already cooked.
Yeah.
The town's already cooked that in, okay, and so the question there becomes, okay, does the town eat any increases during that period, or does the town push them on, okay, to the, the employees?
I'm just sticking to that, when you do a budget and you tell somebody and they're paying check that they're paying three percent, five percent, ten percent, whatever it is, that's what you do.
I think they eat it. Right, we, it's our, it's our responsibility to make a guess, okay, on that health insurance line, and we own that responsibility for the year.
Because if now we start doing a budget, let's say, November or December.
Yeah.
And you change the value of whatever, okay, up or down?
Right.
Okay, you're giving employees time to see what their total compensation is starting July one.
Right. So, so...
And they can make their mind up from there.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, so we, so, you know, the town owes, owns the responsibility for setting quote-unquote a yearly insurance rate, so to speak.
So I think it should be the town reserves the right to change the percentage of the employee's contribution at budget.
You're talking, you're talking the second sentence, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the town reserves the right to change the percentage instead of amount?
Percentage. Right, to change the percentage of the employee's contribution to the cost of any health, group health insurance program upon approved voter budget?
No, at the beginning of each fiscal year.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're at the, yeah, let's see, yeah, the beginning of each fiscal.
No, 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 because, no, no, so when the budget is passed in March.
Well, yeah, but then fiscal year is when the, would actually change for the employee.
But this comes back to the point where I'm saying is, is that I'm trying to give the person knowing that a budget is coming forward.
Right.
And let's say you go from three percent to five percent, okay, during the talk, the budget is put out in January.
Right.
We're done.
Yeah.
Okay, so these employees now know that they're going from three percent to five percent in January because the budget's gonna pass.
No, on July one.
July one.
Not January, July one.
That's when they also get their...
That, that's why it's fiscal year.
That's, that's when they get their salary changes.
But when you said...
Everything changes.
Yeah, but if you say July one, then all of a sudden, to me, I'm looking at, if you word it that way, then the town can change the rate July one.
No, because, no, because it's voted on in March. They're gonna know what the change is, but that change won't happen until July one.
Until July one.
Okay.
Because that's when...
Just word it that way.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, fiscal year.
Yeah, with the fiscal year, with the approved budget for the fiscal...
So you're gonna say the town is...
You can say with the approved budget for the fiscal.
Can you just write down there so I can read what you're writing? The town reserves the right to change the percentage of the employee, of its, of, of the employee's contribution to the cost of any group health insurance program. Now, what do you guys want to throw in? When does it start?
Employees will be provided with notice of any change in the contribution rate, and that's the sentence that changes.
Occurring on...
Occurring, on the start of the fiscal year, yeah.
On the start of the fiscal year.
And that's the part, when you write that down, someone could take that as of July one, I can change your rate.
As of July one, right, yeah, correct.
I wanna give everyone a notice down the road back in March.
In March.
Well, when March, when the budget passes, they'll know.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you know, then...
Players will be provided the notice.
So if the budget passes in March, the town manager can notify all of his employees that as of July one, this will be your new rate.
And it's, it's, it's not that we're planning on doing that, it's just, we're trying to say, okay.
Occurring...
I know what we're beginning to understand.
Yeah, I know, yeah, because, yeah, the insurance company's gonna raise our rates for just, for January first, that's what they do, but we're just saying that the town will eat any changes in the fiscal year, because we budgeted for fiscal year.
July one, July one.
And hopefully you did that.
Hopefully you did your research and did it right.
Yeah.
All right, I think we stop at section eighteen, we didn't make too far, but we put in about a half an hour on it.
While we're still having half an hour, health insurance, employees will be provided with notice of any change in the contribution rate occurring at the beginning of the fiscal year. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that the employee is giving due notice, let's say, in March, that in July, that will be their rate.
Yes.
The way it's written is saying, we can change it July one. That's the way it's written.
And that's not what we wanna say.
But you agree with me now, that's the way it's written.
That's how, that's how some people would read it, yes, I agree. What we wanna say is when the budget's approved, the rate is set. That's what we wanna say.
Right.
Okay, but the, and the rate doesn't go into effect until, until the budget takes effect.
Until July one.
Now you're on board.
And from then, it's a vote in March, and then July one to July thirtieth, your rate will not change.
Right, yeah, that's, that's what we're saying. Right, right, that's what we're saying.
We're on the same boat.
We, we all agree with what, we all agree with that.
I wanted you to write it and then read it.
No, no, we all agree with that.
Okay.
Employees will be provided with...
You wanna get into legal documents?
No, 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 it's, it's, it's approved with the budget, okay, to be effective with the start of the fiscal year.
Let's give it to Linda here to change. Employees will be provided with notice of...
Employees will be provided with the percentage...
Change.
Change, oh, no, the percentage with the town March vote.
And, well, employees...
With approval of the March vote.
Employees will be provided with notice upon approval of the budget for any changes that are due to take place at the beginning of the fiscal year.
I'm gonna step it up, upon the March vote.
Right.
Because then you get another board that comes in and says, well, I'm gonna throw a new budget, sorry, but, and it's in June or July.
Nobody threw a new budget.
No, they can't, they can't.
No, they can't do that. Nobody threw a new budget.
They can't do a new budget.
Okay.
Unless the old one pa- doesn't pass.
Yeah, nobody, yeah, we don't have a new budget.
There's no new budgets.
Okay, so let's go back to this, employees will be provided with notice on approval of...
Of the town budget.
Of the town budget.
When the budget is approved.
So period.
And I would get rid of after that in the contribu- with, with any change.
When?
At the beginning of the, um, with any change.
So just, just go to any change?
For the beginning of the next fiscal year. Right, for the beginning of the next fiscal year.
Yeah, employees will be provided with notice upon approval of the budget for any changes occurring at the beginning of the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
There you go.
Any changes?
Is there one more time?
I think it might be the percentage up above that. The town also reserves the right to change the amount or percentage of employees during...
Yeah, we may have to make this language look prettier tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, during, during the budget.
During, it's, yeah, it's during.
It's the question up above.
We'll get the language right.
I think Linda could just put a whole bunch of question marks in that reply.
But we, we, we agree conceptually that when the budget gets approved in March or second vote in April or whatever, okay, then we notify employees...
Employees get a notice.
But where we're going before was July one.
Yeah, I know, then we notify employees that the change is gonna take place when the budget goes into effect, right, yeah.
Got it.
And then, and then we eat any inter-year changes, that's the way, that's the way it goes.
Yeah, it's a budget.
Yeah, that's a budget.
Yeah.
Okay. You guys get it?
Yeah.
We'll leave the room more often.
We, we agree what we wanna do.
Ron Kish has his hand up, Patrick.
No, uh, yeah.
All right, go ahead, Ron Kish.
Hey, Ja- Ja, the only thing I was gonna add, listening to that whole conversation, to make it easier, do all the employees have a standard annual review date? Like, is it the start of, like, their raises?
I don't wanna do it on that one.
Because if you link it to that, then it's...
July one would be raises, so fiscal year.
Right, so if you...
All employees get the same insurance.
I think we're all, I think you guys are saying the same thing, I'm just saying, if you link it to that because if the town ever changed their date.
Well, let, Ron...
We would know that by the time the March budget...
Ron, the last meeting that we had, we talked about...
Okay.
About employee reviews or whatever, and the reviews are for the upcoming fiscal year also.
Yeah, right, yeah, I'm just saying, if you link this to that, it's worrying wise, might make it easier for you.
Thank you, Ron. Warren, does anyone have questions on warrants?
I'll go down and look at it, we'll...
All right, they, they have been signed to pay, this is just our review of those warrants. Crossing that out, hearing none. Citizens' common concerns, take two. No one in the room, anyone online?
Ron has a sample.
I, I actually have a different one.
Oh, okay, I was gonna just...
I actually have one. Um, I know the road, I, I know the road department came through, they did some fill work along the side of the road here on River at the corner. Uh, some of that has already washed away and it's washing down into the culvert pit. So I'm just worrying that that is gonna, you know, clog the brand-new culvert that was just put in on River up at the corner, up by Route Four.
Yeah, Chad's aware of that and he, he'll be, his crew will be looking into it.
Okay, perfect, thank you, yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it, because it's starting to actually wear out under the new pavement.
Yep.
So, okay.
George, do you step that from, if you have any comments or...
No.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Nope, hearing none. Select board members' comments and concerns? I have none.
So, I'm just gonna mention that, um... So, I'm just gonna mention that, um, I don't know where the contract is about the line painting, I get about a thousand people asking me every weekend at the dump.
It's, it's with the, um, it's with the vendor, they, uh, they're still trying to catch up on all the state's work, so, it's, we're, we're, we're on there, they haven't given us a date, but it's scheduled.
So this.
Yeah.
The, the, the state is not the vendor.
No, 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 it's, the vendor is doing the state's work.
Before they do the town's.
Before they do our work, yes.
Okay, well, we're gonna run into the part that you're gonna put down, and this is what happened in the past, you're gonna put down paint, okay, and it's already below, what, no, there's some paint in some areas, if you remember, everything's not.
The stuff being put down is epoxy, though.
No, no, it's not.
It is.
Okay, part of it, we were told, was going to be epoxy, and some other roads were gonna be painted because something was gonna happen, so part of it is epoxy and part of it is paint.
Everything that's scheduled to be put down is epoxy.
Now is epoxy, okay, so it's below a certain temperature during the nighttime.
Yep.
And what happened in the past time when we got rid of LD, whatever, was because they were putting it down and it was going down, and then it wasn't adhering to the pavement. We're pretty much there now.
Yep.
So.
Well, that's, if they come back and say they can't do it, then we can't do it, and that's what it is.
No, but I mean, we're gonna have to get it done, but I would hate to see us have it done, like, in three weeks from now, and then it wears off in two weeks. And we get a bill for it.
They have it, and they say that they'll only lay it down if it's the correct temperature.
Okay, well, they didn't do that all the time, right, Ricky?
That's all we have to go on.
Epoxy's different than the paint.
Yeah, the epoxy, they said, is down to like, almost, almost thirty-two, but it's low forties, I think you said. So, yep.
So my next question.
I have a concern with that, but we can only do what we can.
You guys got it, so my last question is.
There's no other vendors, we can?
We can, we can reach out to different vendors, but we have, uh.
Their epoxy is limited, there's not much for vendors, and everybody has the same problem, we had one problem where they actually went out in Wisconsin and worked through summer instead of doing work here, and that's why we got pushed back to so late, because they made more money out there, obviously.
My, my question's gonna be more of a contract question, that can be in open, I'd like to know if we paid our contractor that bid on this job, including the striping, are they completely paid? Or are we withholding the amount?
We haven't paid them for what hasn't been painted.
I thought the striping was separate from the pipe part, actually.
It, it is.
Yeah.
So we, we have a separate set rate for L and D, and they have not been paid for what needs to be painted.
Was my question.
Yeah, so, yeah, no money has changed yet.
Okay, so, that's fine, I'm just getting to the point where L and D, if you remember, Ricky, one of the last times they did it, back a while ago, and, um, it was like a thirty-thousand-dollar bill or whatever for that paving, for that, for that.
I'm not sure about the cost, but.
That was, it was up there?
Yeah.
And our town manager at that time, I'm not saying names, didn't want to stick to a contract, it's an issue that we have, that people don't like to stick to contracts on our side, and so they made them call me, and I said, we're not paying the bill because it came up in two weeks.
Oh, no, absolutely.
I'm just giving news, so we didn't, and then they couldn't get us to, get to us or whatever, and now they're back, so, that's all.
Yeah, any other, sort of, cut up from you, second one?
That was my saying.
Anything else? Bill, can I think? Jeff, do you have anything? Well, we'll get to you with manager's report for it. Uh, Jimmy, you got anything?
No, I was gonna bring up, when are we getting our line striping done?
Yeah, they've, they've had it, we've, we've been in it for a couple of weeks now in, in their queue, um, that's, yeah, I have nothing else.
It's gonna be really important coming up the Killington Road on the passenger, right? No, no, coming up the Killington Road, not West Hill.
That's not scheduled, the schedule is West Hill Road, East Mountain Road, and River Road, where there's no line.
Okay, so when you come up the Killington Road, driving up.
So.
Okay, on the passenger side, where there's the curb, the, the cob, the famous cobblestones? Okay, there's, there, there used to be a stripe.
Fogline.
About four feet off of the cobblestones to give the plow truck driver an idea of where to lay, where, where to aim the line. No, there's.
And there's snow on it, though, you're not gonna be able to see the line.
Fogline.
The, the fog line's pointless when you're, when you're plowing.
That line is not scheduled.
I'm just saying, what, the foreman and some of the other drivers, not my job.
I'm just telling you, what I've, my experience after doing it for thirty-six years, that you don't see the freaking lines through the snow, I mean, that's just.
You don't see a white line under the white snow?
I mean.
Yeah, you know, that's, and so does white.
Yeah.
Um, all right, manager's report.
Okay, um, so VLCT Board of Directors sent their condolences on the passing of Dave Atherton, and the VLCT Board of Directors unanimously adopted the attached resolution recognizing Dave Atherton's contributions to municipal government. Would you like me to read the whole thing?
No.
Yes. Okay, whereas Dave, David Dave Atherton served in municipal government for more than a decade as a select board member, select board chair and town manager, and whereas Dave's services across Rutland County as town manager in Brandon, Pittsford, and Killington demonstrated professionalism, competence, and resourcefulness, and whereas municipal management requires being accessible to the community twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and to sacrifice evenings, weekends, and holidays with family for the community, and whereas Dave provided dozens of other municipal officials from assistants to police officers and firefighters, to elected leaders with mentorship and support, and whereas dozens of major community projects such as the Segment Six Route Seven roadway project in Brandon, and the Tropical Storm Irene Infrastructure Resiliency Work in Brandon benefited, benefited from Dave's project management and leadership skills, and whereas Dave brought the interest of small and medium rural communities to the forefront of statewide discussions as an active participant in the Regional Planning Commission and on statewide boards, and whereas through service as a board of director to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, Property and Casualty Inter-Municipal Fund, Dave provided prudent financial oversight from 2017 to 2025, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, representing all two hundred and forty-seven of Vermont's cities and towns, and another one hundred and forty-four units of municipal government, recognizes the remarkable life Dave Atherton lived, and thanks him and his family for their contributions to local government, and signed by Mary Ann Goulet as the president of the board, and Ted Brady as the executive director.
She's the town manager in?
West Rutland, yeah, yep. Um, golf course maintenance issues, so the golf course sent me bills for maintenance, deferred maintenance that hasn't been done, in the amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. So there's a pond well that they wanna put in, which I think is just a drought issue at this point, for twenty-nine thousand plus, uh, golf course garage roof for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two thirty-eight, uh, mold remediation for sixty-two thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars in the garage, uh, repair work to the garage because the roof was leaking for forty-eight thousand dollars, and treat, grease trap repair for seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars.
I'm, I'm just laughing because they're supposed to do a budget to us and they're supposed to tell us what stuff they're supposed to get at budget time?
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm laughing because the garage golf roof is a hundred and twenty-seven, and then there's mold in the garage for sixty-two, so let's make that a hundred and ninety.
Yep.
And then there's something else in the.
Grease trap.
The roof here is, because of the roof leaking.
No, the roof here is, that, that's, where is that at?
Okay, so the roof is one twenty-seven, the mold remediation is sixty-two thousand, three, and the repairs, because of the roof leaking and sheet rock repair or whatever, is forty-eight thousand.
Okay, so a hundred and twenty, oh, you got a steel building put in there for that?
Yeah, well, no, I mean, you know, my concern is.
Brand new roof.
Well, it seems, it seems like the roof has probably been leaking for a while.
Yeah.
To get this kind of damage, and for them not to tell the town.
Yeah, exactly.
Before it got to this point, to me, something needs to be addressed.
And I would tell you that Chris Carr, myself, and Steve Fineran, about four years ago, I think we went to the, not you, but we went to the different buildings, they brought it up, and we tell them to put it in their budget.
Yeah.
You have the budget on there, go to the, you may not have the.
I don't have it with me tonight.
But they do have money in for capital repair. I'm just laughing because there's over two hundred thousand dollars worth of stuff there.
Almost three hundred, two sixty-eight.
Okay, and I could probably get a steel building and, you know, from that, that will have a roof on it, and you go to the company out in Castleton, that's gonna guarantee everything, and they've been in business for a hundred, a hundred years, that's their job, that part of their job of managing is to get to us at budget time, it's not to come to us after they came for that.
Yeah, I mean, this, this was said, I, I don't know, I got, was it the beginning or not?
I'm not, you're the new guy, I'm not taking any. You're the new guy, so they're coming to you.
It's on your desk.
Right, yeah, and I, I look at my computer and there's an email and.
Rebecca came here saying, we need a truck, a, a van.
Yep.
And then showed us that the funds were in.
Right.
Okay, well, the funds are there.
Yeah, I mean, I've looked at the contract, I mean, the town, I guess, is probably responsible for it.
No, we're responsible.
But, but my problem is, is that I think the next contract that gets written says they have to notify the town in a timely manner before these things get so out of hand, I mean, if this was done two years ago, you'd probably be looking at a hundred thousand or replace everything.
The, the contract reads that they're supposed to give us a budget, including their capital product.
Yeah.
You know, they came in, I don't know, it was five years ago or whatever, the roof over the, over the pro shop in the restaurant was done.
Yeah, I mean, it's my understanding this garage roof isn't that old either. I mean, I, I don't know when it was.
Huh? Is it metal or asphalt?
I believe it's asphalt.
It's metal.
But I don't believe.
I think the garage is metal.
Oh, the garage roof, no.
Yeah, I think it is, too.
Okay, yeah, that maybe, yeah.
And I can tell you that, I'm not gonna say what manager, but a manager had somebody go in there to fix it, and that turned into an argument, I think, at the town board.
I guess, so, they want a response to this, what, what do I tell them?
Tell them that they should follow their contract and come to the board with a detailed,
Well, they do have a detailed.
Well, not, not to throw it, they're supposed to come, I mean, the contract also says that they're supposed to be coming monthly and give us monthly updates.
I'm gonna give an update from them.
No, we had an update from them probably six weeks ago, 'cause I, I remember that one of them did give us an update over, it was over Zoom.
Justin and Dave.
Yeah, right, yeah.
But that wasn't really into, they've been talking about this roof and stuff, I mean, just, do they have actual bids, do they, you know, where did they go, and?
Yeah, Vermont Roofing, I mean, there are bids, or not bids, but there is a.
That, that's what's in that, right, all the prices are from bids?
Well, they're all from reputable countries, companies, I don't know if they put it out to bid, or, but from Savage, and from Vermont Roofing, and from, you know, uh, I agree to well.
Because Tori kept going and saying, and he went, you know, to him, and it kinda forced them to say, okay, we better.
Yeah, yeah, this stuff should've been addressed, I mean, mold and all that doesn't happen overnight, you know, it.
Then it's bad.
The grease trap.
Should be normal.
Tori came, listen, guys, Tori came in two weeks ago and said he got quoted, they got quoted from whatever company, seven thousand dollars for a grease trap.
That's for a place, that's not even to clean it.
Yeah, that's the, apparently there's pipes leaking, he said there's a mess on the floor, whatever, I mean, to me, it's just.
The mess on, can I?
It's just, yeah, go ahead.
Can I finish, Tori came in and started talking, it's not my job, but he started talking, the grease trap was, was, if anyone has a grease trap or had one, if you don't clean them out, it's gonna start spewing out.
You're gonna get a mess on the floor.
And that's what happened, and he brought in A1 or whoever, and they cleaned it, it's working, it's rotted, okay, but it's not rotted through, it's losing, but that's what happens in a grease trap. You go online and you put in a forty-gallon grease trap, and they're eight hundred dollars to twelve hundred dollars, so whoever they get the price of seven thousand dollars from, a plumber comes in, unhooks the couplings, and puts in, unless they're gonna redo the whole grease trap.
I don't know, so the grease trap, you say, is a box under their sink, basically?
I don't know if it's under the sink, I don't know.
Yeah, 'cause there's.
Probably in the floor.
'Cause like, we, we had a box under our sink at the inn, and after twenty years, on the twenty-first year when we came back from vacation.
It was over.
It was done.
We, we found this mess on the floor, okay, it happens, they, they do, they rot out, okay, the boxes, but other grease traps might be in a manhole.
Seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, in the parking lot, okay, so, yeah, I don't know what the grease trap is.
My, my, mine is downstairs in the basement.
Right.
But now.
But you're gonna tank.
But, but, but nowadays, if you put a grease trap in, I think the state of Vermont makes you put the grease trap outside, I don't know if they went the right way.
Yeah.
So is this something that you wanna do a site visit?
I mean, this is from Vermont Mechanical. I mean, you can price on a new building, if you say in the metal, it's gonna be cheaper, let's put up a new building.
Well, there's others.
Well, that grease trap's not in that building.
No, in the pump, in the pump and whatever, or the wild.
Yeah, I, my personal view of the pump, uh, wait till we, wait till we're not in a drought and see if it's still an issue.
Yeah, no, that's not an issue, and that's.
But the, the roof, does this board wanna have, ask, request that they come in and so we can ask them questions?
I would like to know if it's mostly due to seasonal damage as in winter time, I mean.
This goes back to when the golf course first, the, the board went over there, like I said, four or five years ago, this has been going on for like, how old is the golf course?
So do we wanna have a representative from the golf course so that we can, we can ask some questions opposed to just saying, hey, Dick, was it, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, this, yeah, so I mean, I, we can certainly invite them to do a video thing from the, whatever.
Yeah, we should.
Yeah, so if we can ask them to come to our next regular meeting, which would be beginning.
I mean, my question would be, did you just go to one roofing company, did you put Did you put it out to?
Yeah, no, that's all legitimate questions, absolutely. But I just want guidance.
To give you an idea, I just did a roof over the restaurant side of the lodge. I was quoted, one person, seventeen, no, just shingles. Seventeen thousand from one company, twenty-three thousand from a second, and forty thousand from a third.
Yeah, they're all over the place.
They're all.
That's how busy they are.
Yep.
Now I went to do over by the old pool, the one that came in lower for the pool is like thirteen, and the one that came in at twenty-something in the middle on the other one is at eleven. So it's.
Jesus.
Well, they line up, roofers line up their business, and when they're busy.
George knows because he roofed.
About forty grand.
George, you still roofing?
No, I'm not.
Now you're talking about that, too.
George would tell you forty.
All right, um, so the town sewer, for Killington Road Sewer, um, there's a lot of discussion on rates and how to change rates, and that they should be lowered because the bond is paid off and they have a four hundred thousand dollar reserve fund. And so I, I did find, like, you know, the rules and regulations for operating the sewer, the bond and everything, but there really is no process to change the rates, but I think that that could be done by the select board.
My question then was.
Well, it has to be, I'm sorry, answer your question.
How much miles of sewer pipe and pumps and the replacement, and I don't think four hundred thousand dollars is enough to cover if something.
Well, it's my understanding there are two reserve pumps in the town garage.
Okay.
Their value, I heard like fifty thousand each.
Somewhere in that range, yeah.
Can we verify that they're there? How long have they been there?
Are they still there? Do you know?
I don't know, I'm not there.
I mean, I've been told that they're there, I can go.
We were there when I was there. The other thing, honestly, that I think that the town should do is they should try to mend the fence with the fire district and.
That's a diff, this is a difference.
Yeah, I know, but the fire district used to actually maintain that sewer line, that's why I'm bringing that.
They don't want to. They did, the, the fire district in Mona, you, you do the books over there, but the fire district, Dave Lewis, did not want to be any part of it because we weren't collecting enough money at one time. I think there was, there was really nothing in the budget, and then the bond got paid off, we started putting money in. I'm telling you, there is a job that V Trans has sat in the back room and told us, just above Killington, the old Killington Cabinets, they're going to be doing work there of moving a covert, and we're responsible to do something with sewer line there, just like the fire district that you're talking about. I don't know if they got billed, but they were told it was two hundred thousand dollars for over by Spring Hill Road.
I don't know about that, but that wasn't the reason that it stopped. It, there was just drama in the town office with the fire district, that it stopped.
Yeah.
So it wasn't, there were some issues.
I'm, I'm sticking to, I'm sticking to right now that this fire district, when work had to be done at Spring Hill Road by V Trans of moving a covert, they were told that they would have to move the sewer line or something with the sewer line, and Chris Carr said it was like two hundred grand, okay? So now we're being told that there's work on a covert, and that's the question I ask. Who knows anything about this covert?
Which, which department manager in which department for the town owns responsibility for the sewer?
The town manager. I'm not being a wise ass.